Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Township of Howell Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, April 24th, 2025. Eileen, opening statement, please.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice have been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 3rd, 2025, a copy of said notice was emailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger. Second, on January 3rd, 2025, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 3rd, 2025, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits at the front and the rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cristiano is absent. Mr. Greenfield is absent. Mr. Carbonic?
Here.
Mr. Mercer?
Here.
Mr. Tannenhouse is absent. Mr. Rubel?
Here.
Councilman Adella is excused tonight. Mayor Leggio?
Here.
Mr. Beto?
Here.
And Chairman Husser?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and afterwards a moment of silence for our men and women serving both here and abroad.
(inaudible)
Next is approval of minutes for the regular meeting of February 20th, 2025. Eligible voters: Mr. Carbonic, Mr. Mercer, Mr. Rebel, Mayor Leggio, Mr. Beto, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mercer, do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Leggio.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Rubel?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Okay, and then the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of March 6th, 2025. Eligible voters: Mr. Carbonic, Mr. Rebel, Mayor Leggio, Mr. Beto, and myself. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Mayor Leggio, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rebel?
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
Mr. Rubel?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Thank you. Eileen, I'm certain we have correspondence.
I have five things for correspondence. The first is the financial disclosure statements are due by regular members by April 30th, 2025. Allison from the Clerk's Office sent an email with instructions on April 1st, 2025.
Yeah, we're all good up here. I don't know. I'll check with the other people.
Okay. Case number SD 3013, Besador LLC has requested to be carried to July 17th, 2025 with no further notice. An extension was granted to the Board through July 30th, 2025.
Do you want to... Do we need a... No? Okay. Thanks, Jen. Sorry, Eileen.
That's okay. Case number SP 1034A, Gutierrez Properties LLC will be rescheduled with notice to May 15th, 2025 with an expiration date of May 31st, 2025.
What was the date?
May 15th.
May 15th. Thank you.
Case number SD 3016, Benzian Youngress will be carried with no further notice to May 8th, 2025 with an extension granted to the Board through May 31st, 2025. And the last one is case number SD 3009, Augustine Kim. For the extension of time, will be carried to the next meeting of May 8th, 2025.
You don't have to come. You're good.
So, we carry that to the next meeting, so just make sure you coordinate with your engineer before the next meeting. You're good to go. You don't have to stick around.
I wish I could come with you.
Do we... The meeting schedule got jumbled around from May?
Yes, because of the National Day of Prayer and, yeah, Memorial Day.
Got it. Okay. 8th and 15th. Cool. That's it, Eileen?
I have one more thing. Just that the council introduced an ordinance at their last meeting, so the Board needs to review it for consistency. Is it up for public hearing and adoption?
Jennifer?
Yes, Sarah. This is an ordinance for, if you guys are aware, the florist in Ramtown. I know, Mr. Mayor, we've discussed this in the past. This is an ordinance modifying the zoning on the florist site and the immediate area, which are small lot singles, to allow for small lot singles on this, on the florist site, 8,000 square foot lots, which is consistent with what's around it in the back. It is consistent with the master plan. We have provisions for maintaining neighborhoods, adequate availability of variety of housing types. This is a small lot single opportunity, and so I would recommend that the Board find this consistent with the master plan.
Despite a walla?
Yes.
Across the street?
Yep.
Got it.
Exactly.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Okay. I will entertain a motion that it is consistent with the master plan, substantially consistent with the master plan. Excuse me.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mercer, do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Leggio. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Rubel?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes. Okay. One, two, three, four, five. All right. Okay, on to... Oh, no, we have a resolution. Appointing Eileen here as the new administrative officer. For those that don't know, our former Planning Board Secretary, Eileen Rubano, has retired, and we wish her very well in her future endeavors. So, I guess we have to vote on you being it?
Yeah.
Officially, even though she's doing it? All right. All right. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mercer, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Rebel?
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Rubel?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Okay, on to submission waivers. Am I missing something here? Okay. This is case number SD 3017, Lizette Chalula, for a minor subdivision.
Hi, David Burns, here on behalf of applicant Lizette Chalula.
Good evening.
So, we have all the submission waivers outlined in our February 27th, 2025 review letter, and our office takes no exception to the Board granting same.
Excellent. Any questions? No? Pretty easy here in Howell, huh? All right.
Thank you very much.
Well, we got to vote on it, so... Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mercer, a second?
Second.
Mayor Leggio?
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Rubel?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Mission waiver granted.
Thank you.
Very much. I'll see you in a few for my extension here.
All right. Okay, on to applications. I believe the first couple are extensions of time. First is case number SD 3014, Neil and Monica Slattery, for an extension of time. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the Board. James Carton here on behalf of the applicant.
James, how are you?
I'm doing well. We're just waiting final county approval. They have everything on their hands. We were expecting approvals actually today. Somebody lost the deed that they recorded, so we sent it back out to them. Could come as early as tomorrow, but we were seeking 90 days just in case.
90 days?
Yes, please.
I think that's more than fair. Anybody questions? No? All right. I'll entertain a motion for a 90-day extension.
Motion.
Mr. Rebel, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Mercer, roll call, Eileen, please.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Rubel?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. All right, the next is case number SP 1099, Monmouth Solar, another extension of time. Do we have anybody from Monmouth? Oh, there you are. How are you? Sorry.
Grace Chan of Proman and Miranda on behalf of the applicant.
Hi, Grace, how are you?
Hi, I'm good. So, we are seeking, actually, I submitted a letter for an extension of time, seeking a one-year extension. I'm actually now seeking two consecutive one-years, and I'll explain why.
Please do, yeah.
So, there are actually two things that are holding us up. The first is a solid waste facility permit from the DEP. We are actually close to receiving it. We submitted the application back in October of 2022. There's been a ton of back and forth with the DEP. March 19th, they submitted another comment letter to us. We are literally preparing a response that'll go out within the next couple of days. We believe that right after that response letter is submitted to the DEP, the DEP will be issuing a permit shortly thereafter. So, that's one. The bigger issue is with PJM interconnection. So, PJM interconnection, they are the regional transmission operator for the transmission of electricity. We cannot operate without PJM approval. PJM coordinates with the utility in order to transmit the electricity, and the problem that we had is... So, we submitted for approval through PJM in September of 2020. PJM, they manage 13 states, so they have a major backlog, and in the middle of our submission, they decided, well, we're going to revamp and overhaul the way we review applications. We got... Our application got caught up in that transition process with PJM. We finally... They actually fast-tracked us, and we were able to enter into an agreement in July of 2024. So, we do have an agreement. Unfortunately, we don't get to negotiate the terms of that agreement, and the PJM interconnection agreement gives PJM until October 31st, 2026, to actually interconnect the solar project.
She's absolutely correct. They're unbelievably difficult, and the red tape is unbelievable. I have no doubt of what she's saying, that they submitted
Oh, I...
...in years ago, and it's just backed up in a quagmire, so I would take no exception to the two-year.
Yeah, I guess my question is the two years back... Like, when does the two years start?
It gets... It's backdated to the end of your approval, right?
Correct, yes. So, we got our approval on August 4th, 2022. We have the two-year period where our approvals are protected from any zoning changes, so that brings us to August 4th, 2024.
So, you're like August of 2026?
Correct.
Got it. Okay, that was my question. Any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mercer, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Carbonic, roll call, please.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Rubel?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Extension granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck. Okay, next is case number SD 3002, Frederick Hare, for an extension of time.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Board. My name is David Burns, and I am an associate attorney of John Jackson's Law Firm in Mansquon, New Jersey, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Frederick Hare, to request a second extension of the minor subdivision approval for the property located at 94 Porter Road. This was previously granted by this Board and memorialized on September 15th, 2022. The resolution approved a minor subdivision of Block 39, Lot 7, into new lots 7.01 and 7.02. The applicant was initially delayed in perfecting the subdivision due to delays in obtaining outside agency approvals. Subsequently, this Board granted an extension of 190 days, and this was memorialized on December 14th, 2023, and unfortunately, that period has since expired before the required milars could be signed and filed. The applicant here experienced a very unfortunate passing of his father, which was incredibly difficult and emotional time for him and his family. This happened very close to the expiration date. In fact, his father was present at the last Board hearing regarding this property. Otherwise, the applicant is in full resolution compliance from my last conversation with the engineer on this project, and I also believe he's received all necessary outside agency approvals. He's fully prepared to move forward. He's not proposing any changes to the application. He wants to build... He wants to develop his house. He wants to have children there, raise his family, and he was just unable to obtain the necessary signatures for the milars before the expiration of the 190-day period. We understand that this is the second extension. However, given the unique circumstances the applicant has faced, we respectfully request that this Board grant an extension for whatever reasonable time the Board deems appropriate to allow for the signing and filing of the milars. And I also have the applicant here, if you have any questions for him.
I'm very sorry to hear about your father. Can you just give us an idea of what you're looking for timewise?
I believe the Board is in possession of the milars, so we can... If it's granted...
60 days?
60? Does that work? 60 days?
Perfect.
Yeah? Okay. Excellent. Any questions? 60 days work? Entertain a motion for a 60-day extension?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Mercer, do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Leggio? Roll call, Eileen, please.
Mr. Carbonic?
Yes.
Mr. Mercer?
Yes.
Mr. Rubel?
Yes.
Mayor Leggio?
Yes.
Mr. Beto?
Yes.
And Chairman Husser?
Yes.
Extension of time granted.
Mayor and Chair members, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Me, too.
Okay, the last extension of time, case number SD 3009, Augustine Kim?
Got carried.
Got carried to the next meeting? To the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yep, I know. Just checking you. All right. So, we only have one application this evening. That's case number SP 1127, Diversified Acquisitions LLC. This is for preliminary and final major site plan with ancillary variance and design waiver relief.
Yes.
Counselor, how are you?
How are you doing?
Good.
Good. Cleared out the agenda for us.
Yeah.
Look at that. My name is Matthew Passata from the law firm Sils, Cummins, and Gross, and I represent Diversified in connection with this application for preliminary and final site plan approval along with ancillary bulk variances and waivers as well. As mentioned before and also on your agenda, we were last here on November 7th, where we had the opportunity to have conversations with the Board and also the public and put on some engineering testimony. However, we weren't able to complete all of our testimony, but one of the focal points that I wanted to bring up to this Board as a matter of recollection is that during that conversation was what exactly is going to be the proposed use for this subject site? And we did a recess, and then we came back, and we agreed on the record that for right now, this application would be narrowed just to the flex space use itself. Subsequently to that, we've had multiple conversations with this Board's professionals, and pursuant to their recommendation, for approximately 60% of the building itself would be... Would not be necessarily designated, but could be used up to for trade contractor businesses. So, just to clarify, flex space use can have trade contractor business, but up to 60% of the floor area itself. So, I just want to get that out front, that we would agree to that such a condition if this Board would find favorably. However, we're not saying necessarily that's going to be the only use, but we just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with that.
Well, it could not be the only use if you're max at 60%, right?
What, the trade contractor business? Correct. We'd have to do another 40%.
Correct.
Yes. So, with that being said, we're going to have four professionals tonight. I don't anticipate that they should have long-winded testimony, but we want to make sure we can cross every T and dot every I.
Sure.
So, just to continue from November 7th, my first witness will be my engineer, Anthony Maltese, followed by my architect, traffic, and then our planner to wrap things up.
Perfect.
So, if I may, I'd like to call my first witness, Mr. Anthony Maltese.
Absolutely.
You guys can sit. Those prisms on the tables are actual microphones.
Good evening, everybody.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to present to the Board concerning this application will be nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, sir, please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your business affiliation.
Sure. Anthony Maltese. M-A-L-T-E-S-E. I'm the principal of Abington Engineering LLC, based out of Freehold, New Jersey.
Anthony, can you please provide us with your educational credentials, name of other boards you've been qualified before in the past as a qualified engineer? And also, if you may, please notify us as to whether or not your engineering license is still in good standing.
My engineering license isn't still in good standing. I'm a licensed professional engineer, professional land surveyor, also certified municipal engineer. I'm currently the borough engineer of Freehold, and I graduated from Hofstra University and also NJIT, and I appear in front of many boards around the state of New Jersey.
We will accept your credentials.
Great, thank you so much. Anthony, subsequent to our testimony you had put on the record back on November, why don't you continue to walk us through what we're looking to do here, including the buffers, setbacks, access?
Sure.
Walk us through.
We're not boring everybody with all the testimony I gave from last time. We basically went through the entire project on an engineering standpoint. I want to just hit up some points along the way, and then I'll get to anybody's questions if I missed anything. In our case, flex is governed by HD4 zoning parameters, and we meet all bulk standards except for one currently. We are providing a 25-foot setback to the rear of the property, which we call the rear along the New Jersey bypass, Route 33 bypass. According to the ordinance and the professionals' letters, they are considering that a front yard setback, so we would seek relief for a bulk variance of a rear yard... A front yard setback at the rear of the property. We've spoke to DOT, they sent us a letter, and I believe you guys should have that in your package, where they established that there is no properties along that bypass that are allowed to have access to the bypass. So, that's why we really strongly feel that that's a rear yard.
It's not a rear yard.
Right.
So, let me be abundantly clear. It's a front yard. They need a front yard setback. Do I take exception with the fact that they need a setback variance? No. But you're not convincing me it's a rear yard. It's a public right-of-way. Whether you have access to it or not, it's a front. So, stop referencing it as a rear. Just own the fact that it's a front and deal with the fact that you're not accessing it and provide the testimony that way, but it is not a rear. And I'm not going to let the record reflect that it's a rear. It's not a rear, it's a front.
So, we do require a front yard setback of 25 feet where 60 foot is required. The site hours in operation, I don't believe we touched base on last time, but the site hours of operation is 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days per week. All ordinance-driven use parameters and restrictions will be written into all the tenant leases.
Last question on that?
Sure.
Not sure if you'll have the answer. We talked about percentage-wise, 60% trade contracting, 40% other, right?
Yes, correct.
How do you know the hours are 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM?
We can institute that in the lease.
Is that what you're going to do?
Yes.
Like, there's not going to be any 24 hours regardless of tenants?
Not to my knowledge.
Got it.
Right, that's the intent.
Got it.
The last time I gave testimony that the bypass was above our site, but it was actually incorrect, or the bypass is lower than our site. The elevation of our finished floor of building number two at the rear of the property is one...
The alternative frontage of the property?
Yes.
Is what I'm going to keep saying?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Elevation 140, and the roadway ranges from 140 to 148, so we're roughly two to eight feet below the roadway of the bypass. The project will be served by a single driveway onto Route 33 Business. Route 33 Business... Or the Route 33... I'm sorry. Our traffic engineer will provide more testimony as to the circulation and the access permit that we're seeking from the DOT currently. The site will have no outdoor storage. The truck parking, there's loading docks located at each of the buildings at the rear of the side of the property, of the side of the buildings, and... The project is planned for flexibility up to six to eight potential tenants, depending on a demisment for each of the buildings. We comply with all parking requirements. What we use, we base our projections on a maximum office percentage of 15% and plus warehouse area, adding one additional space per potential contractor vehicle per ordinance up to 42. This yields a parking count of 97. We provided 101 spaces.
How many ADA spaces would be?
We have ADA spaces in front of all the buildings. We propose one, two, three, four, five. There's five total.
Is at least one of them banned accessible in the site?
Yes, yes, they are.
Does stormwater from the bypass enter that site, or is there catch basins along that area?
There's an embankment that goes at the top left, which is the southerly part of the property. That would be considered a high point there, and then it flows right along the roadway, and it's an embankment. So it's almost like a swale in the back. It's lower than our property and lower than the roadway, and it just continues down through that wood line. That's all bamboo, 50-foot-high bamboo throughout that. So it's there for season. The buffers, we met with Shari on-site not too long ago. We made some corrections to our landscape plan. And if she would agree, I think we've met all the requirements within the buffer areas. Yes.
Yeah, I worked with Steve Kizlik from their office. We had a few back-and-forths, some minor corrections, but as it stands right now, you know, they have plenty of buffer plantings along the front edge. You know, so I think they meet it, especially with their parking setback as well. So I take note.
Thank you. All principal permitted uses are compliant with the buffer provisions. Trade contractor spaces to be valid under the application will be specified within the buildings as part of the resolution compliance submission. With the building codes specified matching one of our pre-specified uses tendered by a letter submitted, this conforms to what the board attorney mandated in our last meeting. Our overall building coverage is 24.61%, which complies. Any trade contractors on-site will agree to restriction fleet vehicle parking to be either in the truck court or in the identified fleet spots. So we did designate fleet spots across from building number one. If you could bring up the site plan sheet number four, please, of the plan set. So directly across from building number one, there's 31 total parking stalls, and those are for fleet vehicles. They're 25 feet in length.
Did you say they're for fleet vehicles?
Correct. The trade contractors on-site will agree to restriction fleet vehicle parking to be either in the truck court or in those identified fleet spots. These restrictions will be written into leases, and the number of fleet vehicles per tenant will be submitted to the zoning officer. No outdoor storage will be allowed. For trade contractor tenants...
Before we go on?
Yes.
You understand that no outdoor storage is allowed, but like, if you store stuff in those vehicles, that's considered outdoor storage. So those vehicles need to be 100% empty, otherwise that's considered outdoor storage.
Okay. No storage is planned. For trade contractors?
Planned, but if you guys are to act in the affirmative, the condition in the resolution will be no outdoor storage, and understand that means that if there's someone there with a fleet vehicle that has stuff in it, that's violating that approval. Just want to make sure we're clear.
Yes, that's acceptable.
Okay.
For trade contractor tenants, office will remain at 20% or less of square footage, and the showroom will be less than 10% of the space. If not compliant, a future user would have to secure zoning board conditional use approval. The latest plans that were submitted indicate a specific space limitation for individual trade contractor businesses that we have withdrawn, given board professional recommendations. And instead, we agreed to board professional recommendations that a maximum of 60% of the project-wide floor area can be trade contractor space. Moving on to the sewer, I know someone had brought that up last time. The sewer connection is necessary for the project to function. Since November, publicly available information has emerged confirming that our applicants are proceeding with the projects that will bring sewer across Business 33 to, so we can tie into it. Signage, the project will be serviced by one monument sign at the entry. We indicate foundation plantings in our landscape plan. Tenant identification will be via individual placard signs near entry storefront window areas, and the only other building-mounted signs will be the address number. The address numbers to distinguish buildings one and number two. Architect will discuss sign locations and appearance. The monument sign size is co-compliant. Architect will also go over the placard signs, but those signage areas will also be compliant. We will require variance from Section 188-256-5B for the number of signs, since each user will require its own building-mounted sign. On behalf of the applicant, the sidewalk calculations that were in one of the board professionals' letter, the applicant, the letter stated that they wanted a sidewalk trust fund of $24,612 to include both frontages, Route 33 bypass, and also Route 33 business. We asked the board to just consider Route 33 business as the only sidewalk contribution, since we are unable to construct the sidewalk along the bypass.
So I would recommend sidewalk along Route 33 and the contribution along the bypass. That's what I would recommend. Like, first of all, we can't absolve you of the contribution. That's not the board's purview. But you need a waiver from providing sidewalk, and we have been getting back information from the governing body that they want the sidewalk. So I would recommend requiring the sidewalk on 33 and waiving the requirement for installing the sidewalk along the bypass. However, you'd have to contribute for that sidewalk along the bypass.
Do you want to discuss that with your client, or is that...
Unfortunately, there are no sidewalks along the...
It doesn't matter. The "there's no sidewalk anywhere" argument is irrelevant. It has to start somewhere. We're interested in getting New Jersey Transit to come along Route 33. We need sidewalk, so...
I don't disagree with you.
Right, so along Route 9, which is also a DOT-regulated highway, we have zero problem getting sidewalk when we ask for it. It's the same scenario along 33. And respectfully to the board, this is not news. I said this exact same thing when we had our first of multiple TRCs with this applicant. My position on this issue has not changed since we started. Sidewalk on 33, payment for the bypass. That has been my position from the jump, and I've had at least five meetings with this applicant. That has not changed.
Do we have just the calculation for the bypass?
It's X amount per linear square foot, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Seven dollars per square foot. Square foot.
We're talking about a $24,600 contribution opposed to a $9,000 contribution.
I'm sorry, but we don't get to change the dollar amount?
No, I'm asking for that.
But at the end of the day, you're developing this site with an industrial development, right? Flex-based trade contractor. Every single applicant that has come before us along this quarter, we have said, put in the sidewalk. You're not new. You're not special.
No one's saying we're not gonna do the sidewalk, so if the applicant's okay with it, I don't disagree with putting a sidewalk.
Well, the applicant is okay with it regardless. You're asking for a waiver. If they say no...
I'm asking for a waiver on Route 33 bypass.
The bypass?
You can't construct a sidewalk there.
Well, you could, but I'm not asking, Anthony, not for nothing?
No, but you can't do that.
Not for nothing? I'm not arguing with you.
Yeah, I know.
What I'm saying is, put the sidewalk in on 33.
Yeah, makes sense.
Pay for the sidewalk on the bypass. That's what I have said repeatedly.
But you're paying for something. You can never construct.
It doesn't matter. We can't, we can't absolve you of it. This board does not have the ability to do that.
Counselor.
If we may?
Yes.
Can we please have a five-minute recess?
Let's take a five-minute recess, please, so that you can discuss it with your client. Absolutely.
The board will now take a five-minute recess and reconvene at 7:55 PM.
If you guys want to use the party.
You want a waiver? Fine.
Now's the time.
You can discuss the waiver.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you guys have your little meeting in there. A bunch of weirdos. Yeah, you're gonna be here tomorrow, bud.
I did that on Tuesday.
No, we don't want that. We don't need that.
You guys are a man. All you guys have last names.
They don't want...
They put them in, right?
Well, ours, after we put the pool in, we got it signed.
You don't want to develop this?
And then it died, and we got it sliced seating.
It's crazy how quick that stuff grows, man. It's like you gotta do it almost like every five days.
Up until last week, it was nothing. It just took off in like a week.
And I have told them, I've told them no less than five fucking times that this is what was going to happen. This is not a surprise. The surprise is that they're surprised that I have been supposed to say the public, which the people on this team should know much better.
I'm doing a fucking roof for like two weeks, and I'm like, I know, I know. They always say they're just gonna put it right in the roll-off, but something ends up in front lawn, and then it's gonna be a divot, sounds like, you know. But they were pretty cool about it. I was like, you don't have to do freaking roof permits anymore? You do not need a roof permit in the state of New Jersey. You know why? Because there's nobody certified from the township to jump up on roofs. I learned a lot today, buddy, by the way.
You don't want to do it? That's fine. See you later.
He's gonna do my house. Yeah, he gave me a quote. I was like, sign me up. Super nice guy. No, roof, you don't need a roof permit anymore in the state of New Jersey. To put a roof... Zero, because there's nobody from the township that can go up on the roof and close out the permit. So they're like, why do we issue permits if we can't close the permit? No.
Who's he with?
He's a good dude, man. Really good dude.
Yeah, good price.
Yeah, oh my God!
Yeah.
That's his, right?
Yeah, he must be doing very surprising.
Like nothing. Doesn't look nothing.
Yeah. I did. That was the one where, yeah, you, yes. Yeah, you were not here. I know that. Oh, really? That was, dude.
They did away with the whole region, just yourself.
It's crazy what's going on. Need some more time, or are you okay?
No, sir.
All right. Eileen will go back on the record.
Meeting has now reconvened.
We will not go back on the record, because we're missing one of our members.
We got one.
Got some more time. Like, it's basically connecting. Right. Absolutely. That's what I'm seeing on a lot of like open, like, I'll have to pull construction permits from properties. 99% of the roof permits, the permit is always on. Always, no matter when it was issued. HVACs, they won't go. Right, right. And they're just open forever. All right. I think we're good now.
The meeting will now reconvene.
Okay, so you spoke with your client, I assume?
Yes, and also make the assumption that we agreed to the condition of approval regarding the payment of lieu and the construction of the sidewalk as well, the other opposing side.
Okay, so construction of sidewalk along 33, contribution on the bypass.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
All right, terrific. Anthony, just for clarifications, can you please clarify again the 20,000-square-foot restriction that was noted on your plans?
Sure. I stated before that the latest plan submitted indicated a specific space limitation for individual trade contractors, and we have withdrawn that on our plans. You guys will see that during resolution compliance. But if you can zoom in on this sheet here, right in the middle of the building, there's some small verbiage. And within, you'll see tenants each limited to 20,000-square-foot maximum building area. That area will be removed from the plans in the next set. I just wanted to clarify that 20,000 square feet was getting removed. That's on both buildings. Sheet four, and it's also on sheet five. Okay, currently, we have an application out with the DOT for DOT access and also to run our stormwater conveying system to stormwater discharge, which we're going to apply to DEP for as well. We're currently in review with the DOT, going back and forth with comments. Site triangles are provided, and visual corridors are safe. The additional relief that we're looking for is building one. This was not in any of the letters that we came across, but we did pick it up, that building number one is perpendicular to Route 33 business, and so we will require a design waiver under Section 188-224C for the front building. That concludes my updates on where we are.
Just for confirmation, the actual building addresses and suite numbers?
Anthony, can you go back? What was that waiver for the front building? I just want to go back to what the waiver was that he just testified to.
I'll give you the section number first, 188-224C. And that is, building one is perpendicular to Route 33. That requires a design waiver.
That's fine. I just did not catch that. That's all.
Anthony, I actually have one quick question for you. Regarding the building addresses and suite numbers, those postal addresses, they'll face what, Route 33?
Those addresses will be located on the door frame, the doors, according to what I understand, and the architect will give more testimony to it, but the placards that will be on next to each tenant's window space.
Okay. I have no further questions for this witness.
The sewer tie-in, is that just gonna happen during the development?
Yes, it's ongoing, and it's supposed to be happening really soon. It's really a condition of us getting this project done.
And that's like DOT approval?
Yeah, it goes through DOT, Howell Township, the municipality, the water, water and sewer department. So we do have to file all our applications for that as well, so.
Okay.
Our TWA.
Crossing 33, did you say?
It's running from Fairfield Road up 33, westbound, going to the west to Howell.
There's a proposed pump station that's being proposed on 33 between Howell Road and Fairfield Road, which will ultimately tie in to the pump station at Fairfield Road, which they can ultimately tie into. So there are things in the works which will happen within the next several, the approvals will happen within the next several months that will make that absolutely viable. It's kind of outside of their control, so I would say it's an outside agency issue. But I would say within the next couple of months, all the things will be put into place that will allow them to tie in.
Got it.
And we still have a lot of homework to do after, you know, with resolution compliance and DOT.
Any other questions for the board? I'm just gonna open it up to the public. Does anybody have...
One last time, we're gonna want a condition of approval that you got the NPTES permit in hand for when you're gonna start, because you can't go breaking ground without that in here and submit it to the municipality.
We will have everything before we break down, I'll break, you know, break ground.
Any questions from the public for the engineer? Seeing none?
He may have some.
Yeah, chairman.
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course, absolutely.
Anthony, I'll keep it as quick as I possibly can. Do you have any issues with complying with any of the comments in our review letter dated February 14, 2025?
No, we did not.
Okay, that's all I have.
Great.
Great. I'd like to call my next witness, my architect, John Mannino.
Sure. Good evening.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to present before this board concerning this application will be nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, sir, please spell your last name and provide your business affiliation.
Yes, my name is John Mannino, M-A-N-N-I-N-O. I'm a principal architect and owner of Sermon Era Architects. We're located in Hillsborough, New Jersey.
John, can you please provide your educational credentials for us, including other boards you've been qualified in the past as an architect, and also if your license is still in good standing?
Yes, so I have an active license in the state of New Jersey, as well as six other surrounding states. I'm a graduate, Philadelphia College of Textiles and Science, which has changed names a few times, so now I believe it's Jefferson University. I have a bachelor's degree in architecture, minor in business. I've presented in front of various boards throughout various states, though this is my first time in Howell, so I thank you for...
Welcome. We will accept your credentials.
All right, fantastic. John, did you have an opportunity to draft the proposed plans here?
Yes, I did.
Great. Why don't you walk us through what we're looking to do?
Sure. I'm not sure who's controlling the screen. There we go. Should be floor plan, PDS. There we go. Perfect. Okay, so as we're all aware, the development consists of two buildings, building one and building two. On the screen is building one, the larger of the two buildings. It is approximately 48,000 square feet. Much of my comments about the buildings will apply to both buildings, since they're essentially a brother-sister. The buildings are built of insulated concrete panels. They provide for a 32-foot clear height, designed to be flex-related space. This particular building accommodates four loading docks and two drive-in doors. The smaller building accommodates four loading docks and one drive-in door. The building is very well, in terms of energy efficiency, based on how they... The, the building is very well, in terms of energy efficiency, based on how they are designed, from a plan standpoint. Again, the, the roof would be a white TPO roof, which provides some energy efficiency. The buildings are both designed to be provided with a, with a fire suppression system, LED lighting, and both roof systems are designed to provide for future solar panel installation, should the applicant or a tenant choose to do so. The, you'll see around the perimeter.
Do you envision the tenants having triple net leases where they're gonna be responsible for the electricity, and as a landlord, may not care if there's someone up there?
I would have, I'd have to defer to the owner on, on how they were gonna handle their leases. Not aware of that. As you can see on the footprint, there's undulations around the perimeter of the building. We've made some conscious effort to provide breaks in the building facade, both in plan as well as in elevation view that we'll, we'll see next. Those breaks in plan vary from eight inches to a foot into the building and up to three feet out from the building. And this particular building, the larger building, you'll see six possible unit entry locations. Each entry location is provided with a projecting canopy to provide some cover and help define that entry as well. And on the elevations, I can touch on where the applicant would like to consider some wall signage for each of the tenants. If you can go to the next page? Yeah, so these are the elevations of the larger building, Building One. What you're seeing, again, is insulated concrete panels in varying colors and textures, as well as articulation to help break up the mass. And at the same time, you know, we made some conscious efforts in working with the town planner to ensure that all four facades of the building is articulated. Often, you know, you would only have one or two facades articulated, and the others are forgotten. In this particular case, we did make the effort to, to really articulate all facades. You see how the, the L-shaped element really emphasizes where those unit entrance elements are, and we carried that as an element around all sides of the building. We've incorporated a, a base element on the two main facades. At the entrances, you'll see CMU water table base. And then on the facade, on the short facade, which is the east elevation facing Thirty-three, we've also articulated a, a wall base to help unify those two walls together a little bit, and then, again, carried the panels around. This particular building, on the high side, is approximately forty-one foot, six inches in height, to the highest point of the panel, from the calculated average grade. But on the front side, which is the north elevation, the lowest point is about thirty-eight and a half feet. The building slopes from, from the south to the north, so all the water is collected on the north side of the building, from the roof. And so that roof line is a little bit lower at its lowest points. The elevation design that you see here is very consistent with the design for the smaller building, Building Two. So we could maybe move on to the next page. Again, this is Building Two, it's very similar to Building One, just a smaller footprint of approximately, I get the square footage off the top of my head, I think it's thirty, thirty-two thousand square feet approximately. This particular building is provide, could provide up to four tenants, there's four entry points on this building. So total possible tenant units across the development would be, you know, a total of ten, six in one building, four in the other. And again, identical four loading docks and identical, identical drive-in door that faces this internal truck court that is shown on the site plans. If you can just go back to that one page real quick. Just want to touch on the bottom left-hand side, there's, there was talk about a monument sign. There is the design that we're proposing for the monument sign. The location of monument sign is shown on the site plans. This particular monument sign does sit on a base in accordance to the ordinance, which is max of two feet. And then the, the sign element itself is three feet high on top of that, and the body of the sign is twelve feet long. However, you'll see the dimensions there, the actual signage of the sign is much smaller than that. And the square footage is, is noted on that design as well. And I believe, pull my notations here, I believe it's about sixteen point nine square feet.
What kind of lighting do you envision for this?
Just some landscape uplighting on the sign, it would not be internally illuminated. And I believe that is also notified there as well. You can go ahead and go to the next page now. And again, these are the elevations for Building Two, very consistent, you know, to, to the previous building that was, that was shown. I'd like to touch on the wall signs.
Before we go back to signage?
Sure.
So, the HVAC and everything, is it on the roof, is it on the ground? Like, what's happening?
Yep, so typically with these flex-type buildings and users, each user, if they have air conditioning, not all of them ultimately do, most of the units are internal. So you would have, you know, unit heaters that are hung from the structure above. And any small office space would be provided with like a ductless split system, or even just a, a system in a closet like you would typically see in your home. The, the office space that typically gets conditioned here is relatively small. Usually less than ten percent of, of the user's space. Consists maybe of a toilet room, a front office, and a kitchenette area. That's often what we see with these type of flex, type of fit-out. So mainly internal, we don't anticipate much rooftop units. Though any rooftop unit that would be proposed on here, we would look to locate them on the roof to ensure that they stay below the forty-five-foot height max. And certainly, we would be open to screening them if they are something that's visible.
I would say they should be screened regardless.
Yeah, which is fine, yeah.
Okay, that's what I was asking for. If they are gonna go on the roof, that they be screened because we have a requirement that, that says that they shall be thoroughly screened from view from the public right of way, so.
That makes sense.
Yeah. But it does, any parapet or any screening goes into the overall height, so just make sure that.
Exactly.
It's compliant with the height and is thoroughly screened.
Yep.
How big is the, the pump house?
The pump house right now is a footprint, based on our initial previous calculation, it's about fifteen feet by seventeen feet in footprint. But it only sits anywhere from eight to twelve inches, eight to twelve feet high. It's relatively low.
Is it required?
Before we go further on, on the sewer, just so you know, the town is in the process of putting a pump station on the site, literally immediately next door to this.
Okay, that's what I was gonna.
Um, which will take affluent from other places.
That's why I didn't know.
Collected, and then tie in to the pump station that's on the Rock Solid property, which is on Fairfield. So, in my humble opinion, and I don't mean to speak for you, I don't think that this site will require an actual pump station. They will be able to tie in, I think it's gonna go from that pump station by gravity. I, we, it hasn't been designed yet, but the, the intention is the pump station be on the lot immediately next door.
Got it, okay, thanks.
Yeah, if I, if I can just reiterate, though, the, what, this particular pump house with the tank is really for fire suppression for the buildings. So, it's not, not sewer.
God, there's no public water.
Yeah, so this is for water supply to the facilities, in particular for the fire suppression system, which obviously requires certain pressures to be met based on your collection of water. So we source the water in the tank, that pressurizes that system, and then the pump is utilized to force the water to the buildings.
And do you propose any floor drains, not, not in the restrooms per se, but in the warehouse portions of the building?
No.
No. And do you have dock levelers proposed?
Yeah, dock levelers are pretty standard for, for loading docks, yeah.
Are you gonna go electric?
No, typically those are mechanical.
Hydraulics?
No, just manual, manual mechanical units, yep. There's a chain that you pull and unhook it. Same with your other doors, they tend to just be. If we could go to the renderings, possibly, I think you had, you had an aerial earlier. Yeah, yeah, this works, and then I believe there's another rendering as well. So, what's on the screen now is, is an aerial, this is actually a photo simulation. We took an actual photograph from Google View and superimposed a three-D digital model of the, of the development as bestly scaled to the photo, to kind of give a sense of scale and, and really help emphasize how the development sits on the lot. It shows the natural existing buffering that exists there along the Route Thirty-three bypass and on the adjacent properties. And again, you can see how the trucks are kind of centered in that court, so they are, they're screened pretty much from all sides, in terms of visibility. This also shows how the articulation of the building facades continue on all sides. So again, we didn't, we didn't shy away from providing a canopy over the loading docks, accentuating the green and grays and, and scoring those panels to bring some articulation and texture on all sides, even, even if the site is not, you know, easily accessible. There's one other rendering, I believe, it's an eye level?
Not an elevation, is it? You said eye level?
It's an eye level, yeah. I'm not sure how it was labeled in the file, but there would have been an aerial and an eye level view.
It could be eight-twenty-six?
Back in there? Yeah, it wasn't in there.
It's not coming up?
Yeah, it doesn't look like we have that in the file.
Okay, that's fine. We can go back to the, if we, if we.
You wanna go to the site plan?
If we can go back to the elevations of Building Number One, I can talk about the wall signs that are being considered for the tenants. Just go to the next page there, if you don't mind, thank you. And then go to the bottom elevation, if you don't mind. So, it, it, the, it was touched on earlier that there is a need by the applicant for individual wall signs for potential users. In Building One, for instance, there's the possibility of six users. What we're proposing is a relatively small sign, about three feet wide and one and a half feet tall. It would be centered directly over the entry doors going into the units, and it would be supported by the projecting canopy that is over the door. So it would, it would reside in the space above the entry door and below the canopy that you see in these elevations.
So this is new?
These elevations are not new, and these.
No, the signage we're talking about?
Yes, yes, the signage is something that is, will be required, and it was briefly touched on by Anthony in his testimony, that we need a variance for a number of signs, since we have multiple users. And that's what I'm gonna do it to now.
Probably should have been submitted to us before today. I mean, like, you're gonna be expecting me to opine on the number, the size, the mounting height, the, like, it's, this application's been carried X number of times. I've met with this applicant how many times, this is the first I'm hearing of it, which in my opinion is a little disrespectful.
It was submitted Tuesday electronically.
Oh, what?
Okay, so it was submitted Tuesday, I'm sorry, two days ago. Not for nothing, like, we were, we had testimony on November of this, of last year. So to submit this two days ago and expect us to review it and opine on it is not acceptable. Plans need to be submitted ten days in advance. So my recommendation is, if, if you want to move forward with the application, that's fine, but the signage should be separate. Because they need variance relief for the signage, I have not seen it.
If we would please this board, we respectfully request that as a condition of approval, we have to submit a signage package.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't think we should, how about this? We'll give them preliminary only, we'll review the sign package, and then we can come back for final. But I'm not comfortable with this board acting on preliminary and final without us having reviewed the sign package, which was submitted forty-eight hours before the hearing. So if they want an action tonight, it should be preliminary only. If they want something other than that, they should carry.
Okay.
We'd like to move forward with the land use application as preliminary and final site plan for tonight, and then subsequently, we'll submit an application specifically designated to signage itself, if the board finds favorably.
But yeah.
That would be a different.
If there's a variance.
You need more than one sign, so if there's a variance.
Yeah, we need more than one sign, so that, that, that kicks into variance. The square footage of signage is not the issue, it's the number of signs. So, we'll remove the signage from the application?
Yes.
We'll remove the signage from the application, not the monument sign, but the wall signage would be removed from the, and we will have to submit that separately.
But the wall signage itself, that's co-compliant? With the monument sign?
Monument sign is co-compliant, correct. That kind of summarizes my, my testimony on the plans and elevations, I'm open to any questions.
Since there was a discussion about signage, that you only have the monument sign, but as you're driving on Route Nine, which Route Nine is not like Thirty-three, but you're only gonna have the name of the site, you're not gonna actually have the name of the companies that could be possibly be part of that monument sign.
That's correct.
So with the monument sign, I think you said it was how high?
With the base, the top of the sign is five feet, so the base is two feet, and then the sign is three feet, and on top of the base.
It's almost about the height of me and the width of me, so it's going to be not very clear from Thirty-three driving for wayfinding. My biggest concern is having, because now you brought up signage, is that you're only gonna put it on the building. So if you're driving, like, how are people, let's say, if there is a CrossFit in there, like, how would I know that, like, oh, I have to go to this site, then I have to go here to this building? So that's another question I'm gonna bring up. Another one is about the pump tank. I think before you said it was eight feet high. But in your drawings, the opening is eight feet, but really it's sixteen.
Yeah, I said it was a variation, I think it was eight to twelve. But with a footprint of fifteen by seventeen right now, based on our initial calculations, it may be smaller footprint. We don't anticipate it being larger than that footprint, because we kind of oversize what we needed. So, and then the tank itself is less than twenty-five feet tall, as an accessory structure.
And when it comes to lighting, that, I appreciate that you're putting more vegetation onto the site, but now with lighting and there is a residential building next door, and you said the hours are between six to ten PM, so when do those lights turn off, or are they going to be? I know that they might be LED, but what, how are you gonna control the lighting, especially for a space like that on site?
Which light, which lights are you talking about?
For the whole site, for a clearing?
Oh, for like, site lighting, you mean?
Yes.
I, I would, I would have to defer to Anthony, the engineer, in terms of the controls on that.
Okay.
Time clock, photocell, that type of thing. I'd have to defer in terms of, to him on the specifications on that. There, as far as the interior lights, those LED lights, those will be controlled as you would any, any typical space, obviously.
Perfect.
With occupancy sensors and so on, often. So if it's vacant, the lights are out, internal, inside the building.
And for the receiving area, because since they're gonna be flex spaces, are they all gonna have access to it? Or how is that being blocked off?
Internally, you mean, inside the building? So it would be like a shared dock scenario? So we would have a shared dock where, if you have, let's say, two users, both users have access to the same dock area. And then they're, based on how we design the insides, they would then have access to bring that material to their space.
All right.
Directly, but it's a shared dock situation.
All right. And then, I also, because I know it's flex spaces, and you said that each space will have a restroom or bistro or anything like that for each one, depending if they want to have one tenant or multiple, that how would the water, ah, water ratio, I'm sorry, I'm thinking of when, in my mind, the, it's a, it's in the codes for plumbing, it's.
For plumbing fixtures, you mean?
Yes, thank you.
Like toilets and so on?
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so it really depends on the user, depends on how much space they take, will dictate how many toilets or sinks might be required.
Okay.
So in New Jersey, you're allowed to design to an actual occupancy number. So even as a tenant who may take five thousand square feet, if only, if there's only two occupants in that space, because of the nature of the use, the, the code in New Jersey allows you to just put one toilet, one sink, right, for that whole space, right? But obviously, if you have a user that may have, you know, a few more people, or they have a need where they want to have individualized male, female, then you, you know, you work that into your design for that user. We would have, as part of the design, we, we put in underslapped sanitary lines ahead of time with stubbups, so we can anticipate where we need to make our tie-ins when we do fit-ins. Perfect, that's all the question I had.
Perfect, that's all the question I had.
And respectfully, would you like us to answer the lighting schedule from our engineer?
Yes, so, the lighting will be on a time clock, on a timer switch, so approximately, I would say 30 minutes after close of 10 o'clock, it would shut off.
All right.
Okay.
Oh, with that, actually, one more question about the lighting, because there's also EV parking. So how could, if it turns off in 30 minutes, how would it turn back on if, let's say, I drive my Tesla and I wanted to park in that spot, because while was all taking off, would they turn back on, or would they just stay off?
This is, it's not public parking, it's only private parking, so you're not allowed on the site, unless you're doing business there.
Okay, but I'm just thinking of, since there's EV parking, like, how can you control that?
I don't know how the EV controller works, I would imagine you could set timers on that as well, but I'm not sure. They probably shut off after a certain time, I'm sure they don't want people going there after night and trying to fill up. I don't know how it works on a private site, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Just, just to be clear, signs are being removed, you're looking for preliminary and final, and you're going to the zoning board?
For clarification, the monument sign is staying.
Correct.
But the wall signs are being removed.
Right.
So that we can move forward preliminary and final.
And you're going to zoning.
And we submit the signage package, more likely they'll have more than one sign, so it's gonna send us to zoning. Thank you.
Got it. Anything else? Jennifer?
Nope.
Anybody from the audience? Okay.
If I may, I'd like to call my next witness, my traffic engineer, Gary Dean.
Good evening.
Do you just want to affirm the testimony about the consent of the board concerning this application would be enough to bust a crew?
Yes, I do.
For the record, please state names by your last name and your business affiliation.
Certainly, Gary Dean, D-E-A-N. I'm a principal with Dolan and Dean Consulting Engineers. We are headquartered in Somerville, New Jersey, with a branch office in Ocean Grove, New Jersey. By way of background, I'm a graduate of Lehigh University with a Bachelor of Science degree in Civil Engineering, and a former member of the faculty of Lehigh University and Lafayette College, having served as an adjunct professor teaching transportation engineering. I've been doing so over the past, I'm embarrassed to admit, more than 40 years, and I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey, as well as surrounding states, and my credentials are valid and in good standing.
Good wrestling programs there in Lehigh and Lafayette. Very good wrestling programs.
Quite a rivalry, too.
We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you, sir.
Terrific. Gary, why don't you walk us through the traffic impact of the proposed use?
Sure. Just by way of identification, I prepared and we submitted a traffic impact analysis for Howell Flex Industrial dated April 10th of 2024. That report sets forth the general parameters of any traffic study wherein we counted during peak commuter hours in the site vicinity, including the self-storage driveway across from the subject site, and also at Park Avenue and at Brickyard and Fairfield. All of this information, the duration of the counts, the actual information is all embodied within our report. Most notably, as you've heard from our other experts, the only means of ingress and egress to the subject site are to Route 33 Business. To the south of the site is in fact the Route 33 bypass. Just by way of background, we have reviewed the construction plans. When DOT acquired the right-of-way, it was for the purpose of building the bypass, and to keep it a bypass and not a land service road that has access, DOT imposed what's called a limit of no access along the southerly property border, which means we can't have access to the bypass, nor should we, just for general mobility purposes, but that is forbidden by DOT, not only when the property was acquired for the bypass, it conveys with successors and title, and it is incorporated on what is known as a general parcel and property map. That section of the bypass is also known as access level one, and much like your municipal master plan with a hierarchy of different roads, the most restrictive in this state is for limited access freeways, which the bypass is. And simply put, you know, you can't have access on roads like Route 287 to a driveway, and this falls into that category. For this application and concurrent with the preparation of our traffic study, we did review the access design to Park Avenue. DOT has a set of regulations known as the State Highway Access Management Code. It sets forth all of the geometric criteria for driveways, such as width, radii, curbing that's required. All of those components are reflected on the plan, and the design complies wholly with DOT's access code. We have had an initial review from DOT already. I'll say, in essence, they have approved the driveway design. As you heard from our engineer, we are fine-tuning the nature of our stormwater connection, which is to convey runoff, when it rains, across the site frontage, but on a pipe that runs behind the edge of pavement, that crosses several properties to our west, and then ultimately discharges into the water course. Putting stormwater means we have to detain it, we have to filter it, we have to environmentally control it, and we get into the agencies, DEP, DOT, but we are well within that process. So in terms of our driveway and access to the site, as reflected on the exhibit you have before you, there is only one way in and out of the site. Our frontage improvements are relatively limited, and the reason for that is, and I'll draw your attention back to the traffic study, we included projections of what the two buildings were generating. As a flex building, it is a multi-tenanted industrial-type building, typically occupied by either companies that need mostly storage and a small office component. For example, any manufacturer or builder that assembles, you know, specialized equipment, instruments, things of that nature, these types of spaces where the bulk of the tenant space is allocated for storage, it becomes very convenient for them to do that fabrication, assembly, and storage within the back end of the space with a small administrative office in the front. The hours for each of those tenants, in our experience, having studied these flex uses, widely vary. Sometimes you have contractors that are in it before 7:00 in the morning and out already onto a job site. Other times, you may have more professional-type tenants that come in closer to traditional commuter hours. Because of the wide variety within the space, and that most of it is dedicated towards storage internally, that the traffic generation is historically low. And just to put it into context, our report indicates projections based on the 81 roughly thousand square feet, it would generate about 30 traffic movements in one hour. So a car either entering or exiting, or a truck, once every other minute. It's, it's, from a traffic guy's perspective, these are great uses because they don't generate a whole lot of traffic. You will note that there are accommodations in the plan for a truck court, recognizing, again, on a, on a building such as this, there may be the need for occasional access. The majority of the time, it's box trucks, smaller deliveries. However, the plans have been designed, the driveway has been designed, in the event, unanticipated, but we cannot rule out that a tractor-trailer may not wind up on the site for whatever reason. All of the designs will accommodate that size vehicle, and is reflected, again, with the truck court toward the southeast corner of the property.
Can I stop you right there?
We also have two, two small loading areas up front at building one.
I just wanted to, sorry, just wanted to touch on circulation?
I was about to do that, if you don't mind.
Okay, all right, go for it.
I knew where you were going with it.
Yeah, all right.
So your engineer has raised an issue in the review regarding the width of the circulation, is that we're ahead of grade? As I read the standard, the main corridor connector access aisle for the site must have a 30-foot-wide driveway. The design, as you've seen, unless my plans show it, is 30 feet wide, coming in from Park Avenue. It continues to the westerly side of building one at a 30-foot width, and then it's 32 feet entering the truck court. In my opinion, it complies with the standard. The one area that doesn't is you'll see on the upper right-hand segment of the exhibit, which is the southwest corner of the site, that is a parking lot for automobiles, and I would not characterize that as a main connector aisle, as your ordinance calls it. It's a standard parking lot like we have out front or any retail space, it's not intended, and it's dead-end, so it doesn't go anywhere, it ends in the parking lot. That is designed at 25 feet, which, in my opinion, is the appropriate design standard. If it warrants the technical waiver, we will request it, but in my opinion, the purpose and intent of your ordinance is where we have the highest volume of traffic, the greatest number of parking maneuvers, and access by trucks. All of those dimensions meet the 30 feet that's required.
Yeah, absolutely agree. Our office doesn't have any issues with that technical waiver, although it is required. Some of the concerns that I see is potential circulation with the tractor-trailer back to that rear loading area.
And where are our clips?
Yeah, and circulating, and really, as well as, if a tractor-trailer's parked at that entrance, trying to exit, is there any way a trailer could pull in at that same time? I think the circulation there could be a major issue if you have multiple tractor-trailers on the property.
And I guess I want to be clear, I don't have a point there. Are you discussing the two loading spaces on the northern end of building one?
Yeah, so I believe I see six, sorry, five loading spaces on building one, as well as, one, two, three, four, five, as well as building two.
Yeah, thank you, Christine. I, if we're looking, can we go, oh, I'm sorry, you're discussing these spaces?
Yep, exactly.
Okay. The design of these is that it allows a truck to pull in, let's say it's going to building two, then start its turn in a counterclockwise manner, which is why we have the extra painted areas, and then that truck will back into each one of these loading spaces. If the truck is trying to access the loading on the southern side of building one, that truck would pull in the court, it would then have to move, maneuver to the left, and then turn to the right, facing the loading, and then again, that truck would back into those loading spaces. For typical industrial buildings, the minimum for maneuvering and the loading space itself is usually 110 feet. We've well exceeded that with this courtyard design, and the whole purpose is just to give those drivers, again, if they're all tractor-trailers, the ability to maneuver within this courtyard.
So I-
Correct.
Yes, so I assume no issues providing circulation plans showing the same?
No, none at all. We'll be happy to do that.
All right, that's all I had.
Thank you.
I just have a question about the parking calc?
Okay.
So for flex, it looks to me like you have utilized, like, the office and the warehouse, right? But flex basically says you have to calculate the parking based on the highest intensity parking requirement for whatever use you're gonna put in this building. So if you're gonna sit on office storage, that's what the approval's gonna be based on. If there's some other permitted use you want to put in here that has a higher parking demand, let's say like indoor rec, which was not anticipated, that would not be permitted under this approval, and any tenant that would potentially come into this space would be required to come back. So I get how the parking was calculated, and it's totally legitimate, but that is definitely gonna limit prospective tenants moving forward, because flex equals the parking for the highest anticipated parking demand permitted. So if you're not proposing that, and you're not parking to that standard, just be, just understand that the resolution is gonna be very clear as to how the parking was calculated and what types of uses are anticipated, so a prospective tenant that doesn't fit that requirement requires the applicant to come back. Are we good with that?
Yes. The answer is yes, and it's a fairly common scenario with these types of buildings in that, some of our clients have these, and you get a strange tenant that wants to do an escape room. I don't think there's a zoning ordinance in the state.
Well, we call it indoor rec, but yeah.
So, but it, yes, the applicant would clearly need to come back, demonstrate sufficiency of parking.
Essentially, what we want to agree to on the record is that, when a tenant wants to seek a CCO, they have to establish that there is sufficient parking for that use.
I totally understand that part of it, however, trade contractors, as we discussed at the outset of the application, was limited to 60% of the square footage. The balance 40% is open to other permitted uses in the zone, however, you need to park it. And so I'm not suggesting there's anything wrong with the application as presented, however, the parking calculations, as I'm looking on the plans, are based on a specific square footage of office and the balance as warehouse. There's other permitted uses in this zone that are way beyond that parking calculation that were not factored in here, and it could potentially be problematic for you when a tenant comes online. I just want to make it abundantly clear on the record, and Pat, for you, for the resolution as well.
And we completely accept that, we're very cognizant of that, and we understand that that's gonna be our responsibility. And again, I want to reiterate, this is being built on spec, so contingent on what those users are, will dictate what the parking requirement is, and that'll be our responsibility to see if we can satisfy that parking requirement. Absent being able to do that, we'd have to come back for a variance.
If you're building this on spec, what's your threshold limit in terms of how much tenancy have you got to have locked up in order to put a shovel on the ground?
For moving forward?
Yeah.
Well, that's our responsibility to take that risk.
Yeah, I got a question. I, I'm a, I'm a sports guy in town, I coach multiple sports, right? And it's a need in this town that, you know, we have indoor recreation areas, right? We come to your client, hey, we got, we want batting cages, pitching mounds, yada, 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 right? Sounds great. If the building is, in the, based upon what now, right, of what you're projecting, but it makes sense for a tenant like that to come in, how do you reconfigure it to, or, like, I guess my question is, if the parking isn't there, and that tenant is sexy, for lack of a better term, right? How do you reconfigure, or do you just say you come back and hope for a variance?
Well, what we do is, depending on the tenant, we look at the time of day, because some of those uses are busier either later in the evening or on weekends, when we would expect very little demand in parking from the trade contractor. So we sometimes call that shared parking, where if we were to sum up the individual needs for each of those components, we would need a variance, but our justification in seeking the relief is that at, call it 5:00 o'clock at night, when instructional play starts, or on the weekends, we would do a study, and we would prove to, ideally to your satisfaction, that there is no demand, and that we're left with, you know, dozens of empty spaces that can readily be used to absorb that type of demand.
Got it.
So that would be, that would be a justification for relief, right? Is that what you're saying?
Correct, correct.
Because like, indoor rec, the parking requirement is one per 250, so that's a pretty intense parking requirement that was not contemplated in the parkings for this particular layout, correct?
Well, I'm not sure what the office ratio is, it might be four per thousand as well.
Well, let me, give me, office is one per three, so indoor rec is higher.
Higher, yep.
So this is parked at office storage, basically, and I'm not saying they don't comply, they do.
Yeah, no, I get it.
But if you go to our ordinance and you go under flex, it says parked at the highest intensity use proposed. So understanding that there are other uses that are permitted in the zone that have a higher parking requirement than you're proposing, if someone were to come back, in all likelihood, they would wind up back before us for some kind of parking issue later.
That's duly noted.
Yep.
Yep.
Just want a clarification, thank you.
And in conclusion, in looking at the traffic study, the movements in and out of the site, recognizing we're, you know, stone's throw away from our DOT approval, excuse me, our study has shown that we would have favorable levels of- me, our study has shown that we would have favorable levels of service getting in and out of the site. I would say similar to all of the other uses along this corridor, probably a little better than Wawa, but similar to the office park immediately to our west, which is comprised of generally the same type of end users, that we would have safe and efficient ingress and egress, in my opinion, for what you have before you, and recognizing what was just discussed, that a suitable parking supply has been provided. And I think in terms of the other tests and circulation elements, that there will be safe flow through the site as well, not only for regular users, but in the event that emergency access is needed as well. And that's all I have in the way of direct testimony.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Board, any questions?
I just have a general question.
Sure.
Like, I see a lot of commercial buildings that have like fire lanes around the back, the ability to circulate completely around that. What is it that makes a building require that, and why doesn't this have something like that?
I'm a little outside of my expertise as a traffic engineer. That usually stems from, I'll say, a preference by local fire, but it's compensated for the fact that these are industrial fire-rated buildings, and I don't know what the rating is, but they're steel and concrete, and they're sprinkled. So the idea is that there would be access where needed, but not to pave around the entire building perimeter. It's, you know, it's like we don't pave around our houses either. So it's a sprinklered building with a higher fire rating than frame construction, I think is the best safeguard against that need. But I'm not an advocate of just putting down more blacktop. We get into stormwater and flooding and a host of other issues, and to the best of my knowledge, it's not required by any code.
Do you have a letter from the Fire Bureau?
I do not, no.
There should be one.
If I may bring up my engineer.
Of course.
Thank you.
We have two correspondences with the fire official. We've made several revisions to where he wanted the fire department connections and also the striping. I don't believe we have a final approval, but we addressed all his comments, and none of which had anything to the rear of the building that was required.
Over.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Anyone from, yep, anyone from the public, questions? Seeing none.
All right, I'd like to bring up my last witness. You may now hear Christine Cofone.
Oh, thank you. Good. Nice to meet you. Hello.
Good evening.
I swear affirm and testimony you're about to present before this work concerning this application will be nothing but the truth.
Yes.
For the record.
It's Christine Nazzaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Cofone, C-O-F-O-N-E. Business address is 52 Reckless Place, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701. I'm testifying this evening as a licensed professional planner. I have been qualified here in Howell on numerous occasions, as well as before about 450 or so other planning and zoning boards. I've been practicing for about 29 years in New Jersey.
You're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is what I would consider a substantially conforming application in the HD4 zone. We meet all of the use and essentially all of the bulk criteria. The reason we are seeking a front yard setback of 25 feet along the bypass is because that is a technical front yard, right? It's technically a frontage. Even though it will function as a rear yard, it is undoubtedly technically a front yard setback. So that is the only bulk variance relief that we are seeking in conjunction with this application. As a point of the intensity of this project in relation to what the HD4 zone envisions, the HD4 zone envisions about 70%, or not about, 70% lot coverage, where this site has about 50. So dimensionally and in every other way, we meet with the letter of the intent of the HD4 zone. So statute, and as was testified to and stated by earlier witnesses, we have a letter from the DOT saying that you cannot have and will never have any access to bypass 33. So we know that even that variance relief is required there for that front yard setback, that that is always going to maintain a quiet portion of the site, as the DOT is not going to ever allow access to that. So that, to me, allows us to argue for this variance under the C1 and C2 statutory criteria, because I do think that that is a unique feature impacting this piece of property, which would be a C1 criteria. In the absence of any hardship criteria, the board can still grant the variance if you find, as a board, that one or more purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by the grant of the application. Criteria G of the municipal land use law talks about providing for sufficient space for a variety of uses in different locations. I would submit to the board that the HD4 zone was born out of your 2022 land use element. In that element, you actually removed age-restricted housing, and you added flex warehouse, a flex space, and a number of other uses, actually including warehousing, to the HD4 zone. So you removed residential uses at that time and added commercial uses, some of the more intensive commercial uses in Howell. So I think that you could certainly conclude that this is an appropriate location for that and find criteria G. Criteria M also talks about inefficient use of the land. I think that even though we do have a dual frontage with 33 and bypass 33, that the relief does take advantage in efficient use of the land, and I think the site has been laid out too in all respects. When you have share, it indicates that you have plenty of plantings on your site. I think we can come to the conclusion that the zone, the plan has been laid out well. So it's not something we get to hear or enjoy a lot, so I thought that it bared repeating tonight. So that's the positive criteria for the grant to the variance that we need in conjunction with this. I know we were asking for, to sign, I believe we're going to table that request, even though I think it's unusual, right? Your ordinance requires you, and the 60-40 split requires you to have multiple users here, so I don't think it would be unusual to have a sign for each tenant on the building. But if your professionals are not comfortable at this time, to address that, then I suppose we can kick, you know, come back, either we'd have to go back to the zoning board to do that at another look, another time, if the board is not inclined to do that as a condition of approval, if you were so moved that way. So as far as the impact on the zone plan, right, because rather, whether we come in under the C1 or C2 section of the statute, we have an obligation to demonstrate that we satisfy the negative criteria. And the negative criteria does not ask you to hold us to establish that there's no detriment, just that the benefits of the grant of the variance would outweigh any detriment to the zone plan. And as I told you, this zone, the HD4, came into being from your 2022 land use element, which followed your 2019 reexamination report, which had a goal which reads as follows: "To encourage new businesses and industries to locate along the township's highway corridors, which will grow the economy of Howell and provide new services and potentially employment opportunities for residents." So when I read that goal, I feel as though that this application could not possibly have a substantial detriment to the zone plan or the public good here in Howell, when your master planning actions have called for commercial development and ratable producing developments in this location on your highway corridors, which this would certainly be, and then that there was a subsequent action in 2022 to remove age-restricted housing and add, expand the uses and create the HD4 zone. And I should note that this application eliminates several non-conforming residential structures that are on the property. So if you read the HD4 uses permitted as of right, you will in no way, shape, or form find that you can have residential there. So when I look at the impact on the zone plan, I look at this application as only having a positive impact on the stated purpose of the HD4 zone, which is written in the zoning ordinance at section 188783, as "The purpose of the HD4 zone is to provide for highway development along Route 33 that will provide a balance of social, economic, and cultural opportunities for residences while maximizing existing transportation and other infrastructure along the Route 33 corridor." So again, I believe that we meet our statutory burden of proof for the grant of the variance relief under the C1 and C2 criteria. Statutorily, we only have to advance one purpose of the land use law. I cited two, criteria G and M, and I testify that is my specific opinion that not only will we not have a substantial detriment on the zone plan or the public good, but we will in fact implement the 2022 land use plan element, which created your HD4 zone, as well as your 2019 reexamination report, which had a specific goal to create businesses, new businesses and new industry on the highway corridors in Howell. So with that being said, I believe the board can certainly move this preliminary and final site plan with as very minimal relief and waivers required in accordance with the statutory burden of proof required under the municipal land use law.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Christine, thank you, as always. Anyone from the public? Seeing none. Floor is yours for any?
Thank you.
Yeah, summation, remarks? Board professionals, anything at this time?
No, Mr. Chair, I don't disagree with the testimony that you just heard. I actually think that I agree with Ms. Cofone, that given the DOT's correspondence and limited access, yes, it's technically a front yard, which they need relief, but there's no access available, so I do believe that it is a C1. But I do think she also put the criteria on for a C2, which kind of covered them regardless. But I don't take any exception to the testimony with regard to the setback variance, which they need, and then they needed de minimis waiver relief for lighting, the width of the driveway, some of the other minor issues that we talked about before, the sidewalk along the bypass. All those things are enumerated in both my letter and Ryan's letter, and I don't take any exception to anything that they've asked that we haven't already addressed.
At the beginning of the night, we conceded back on November 7th that the use itself would be flex space. At the opening of tonight's hearing, we said we designated it only maximum 60% for trade contractor. We've also withdrawn our signage as it relates to the proposed improvement while keeping the monument side, and we believe that this is a favorable application that should be approved in the affirmative. And I think the big reason why we're here tonight, and the reason why we're able to reach this conclusion hopefully, is because of the partnership we've had with the board professionals. So I just want to thank you guys for meeting with us numerous times. So thank you. We hope you find the affirmative.
Great. Yeah, I think it's a good plan, and this is the type of, you know, project that is where it belongs, right? I mean, it's on Route 33, and I think it's a very good plan. And thank you for working with the professionals. Thank you professionals for being so patient. So at this time, I will entertain a motion for preliminary and final, taking out the signs as discussed, that there will be going back to the zoning for that. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. It's coming a long way, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Mercer, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mayor Leggio. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Carbonic.
Yes.
Mr. Mercer.
Yes.
Mr. Vubel.
Yes.
Mayor Leggio.
Yes.
And Chairman Husser.
Yes.
Application is approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone.
Have a great night.
You too. Jennifer, do you want to give a quick update on the master plan?
Sure. We are currently working on the housing element and fair share plan in accordance with the legislation that came out last year regulating affordable housing. We are, we have actually a very good head start on it, God bless you, and settled on a really nice number, so I think we will be prepared to present this in a public hearing at the second meeting in May.
Great. Thank you. And just an update for you New York Giant fans, they selected Abdul Carter from Penn State with their first pick overall.
Are we happy with that?
I'm a Dolphins fan, I picked 13, so.
That's not how we.
We are.
But the Jets just picked Armand Membo, offensive tackle from Missouri.
What's that?
I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion.
Yeah, there's, isn't there another ordinance we could discuss? Yeah, there's another ordinance.
Did we not do this, Eileen, under correspondence?
We did. Yep, yep, we took care of everything.
Yeah, I thought we did that under correspondence.
There's a second ordinance, the aruf.
This was the remission of the section down by.
No, there was, there was another one about the.
Not the floors, Jennifer.
The arufs.
Oh, the aruf. So that is, what, how's it? Aruf? I would submit that that is consistent with our master plan on promoting health, safety, and general welfare.
Okay. I had a couple of comments I wanted to submit for the record to go back to the council. One of them being, they have to apply for a permit to put these up in public right-of-way. How do we know if they've obtained that permit? When you get a building permit, you know, it's displayed on the frontage of a house so that you could tell that they've gotten the permit. Is there a way that they can put it on, you know, the pole system every 100 feet or 100 yards, just to show the property owners adjacent to the public right-of-way that they in fact did get a permit and they're not just moving forward with a project without said permit?
Is that a planning or zoning?
I don't know the answer to that question, so I would just submit it as a question or a comment associated with the ordinance, because I really don't know what the answer to that is.
Do you need it like in writing in an email, or does this suffice verbally?
No, I think we're gonna, we're gonna act on it in terms of consistency, and then, Pat, we need to keep these comments as things attached to the resolution determining consistency. So the first is like, how were our permits obtained, right, by the individual property owners?
Yeah. Yeah, how are they obtained and how are they displayed such that the private property owners adjacent to the construction are aware that a permit was in fact obtained?
I don't even know that it's considered construction, to be honest, right? I don't think it's considered construction.
It's not going to be one every person.
It's basically a wire that's hanging off the telephone poles.
But in there, on streets where there are no telephone poles, they have to install a pole line.
I think it's a legal permit.
It's in the ordinance, there's 16 to 20-foot high poles that they need to install, and I would assume they would land in that grass area between your sidewalk and your curbing.
Maybe, but that's, the grass area between your sidewalk and the curb is town property. It's not their property. That's in the right-of-way. Your property doesn't start until the upside of your sidewalk.
Understood, but I'm just saying, how do we guard against people just doing things on their own without obtaining a permit for it and just putting poles up on the street line without permission?
I think that's, you have to defer to your code enforcement officials. These types of established ways of demarcating certain areas of your neighborhood have become rather commonplace over the last 30 or 40 years in New Jersey. So I don't think it'd be too hard for your code enforcement officer to contact his colleagues in other municipalities and say, hey, have you had an enforcement issue where people have engaged in the proverbial self-help, which you're concerned about, and how are you dealing with that?
Okay, so they would have to be directed to the code enforcement official to check.
Well, most, most any other code issue is dealt with there if it comes down to a permit not issued, people doing work without, or doing work outside the scope of what was given in the permit.
How does a utility company?
What's that?
Do that? Do they do, they go through the approvals?
Usually, there's an agreement of some type between the people looking to put up the aruf and the utility that owns the pole.
Right.
Because then it's primarily their responsibility, you're delineating the area to meet the religious aspect of the service, but the pole is owned by the power company. So that's a separate agreement they need to enter into, and I believe the ordinance had a provision along those lines.
I get, and it kind of rolls into my second question as to why I'm, you know, bringing it up is, what, you know, what would happen if one of these poles were to get blown over and go through your car windshield on your, in your driveway on your private property? Would, you know, if they weren't constructed properly because they didn't have a proper permit, that's, it kind of rolls into, you know, being able, the public being able to check if the permit was obtained. I mean, are permits required for this? It does have the ordinance written, they have to obtain a permit, and if there's a private property that it traverses, they have to get permission from the private property owner. And then the second question is, it says that the township has to be put on as an additional insured on the certificate of insurance for the applicant. Can you put the private property owner adjacent to the pole lines put on the additional insurances in case something like that happens? You have a storm and these poles get blown over and.
I don't think so, because the structure's in the right-of-way, it's not on their property.
Even if it blows over and damages your property?
It's a structure in the right-of-way. It's no different than if a.
A tree?
JCP, a street tree or a JCPN L situation.
So it's on the township?
It's, it's in the right, which is why the township is on the insured, because it's in the right-of-way. It's not on private property, it's in the right-of-way.
So go back through the township's insurance if that were to happen? Okay, understood.
Whatever joint insurance fund the municipality is a member of, they should be able also give you guidance if needed with regards to what is or isn't covered.
Understood. And finally, easements, public easements through private properties, that still counts as requiring permission from the private property owner? Like, say for instance, you have a pipeline running from the street to a basin or something, and it's private property, but it's a public easement, public right-of-way, they would still need to get permission from that private property owner, even if there's an easement on the property.
I believe so, but I'd want to look into it one more first.
I believe so, because I think it's already happened.
We can address it as a question.
What's that? Right, John?
It's already, it's already...
Yeah, it's already happened.
What do you mean, it's already happened?
Where it's the right-of-way, but, yes, your, the question, the answer to your question is yes.
They do need to get permission.
Yes.
Okay. And how is that permission obtained? Is it a written letter, or what would happen if they sent you a letter? Is there a certain number of times where if, you know, you throw it out as junk mail, you don't realize what it is, they could just proceed with the project because they haven't gotten your permission and they've given you due notice?
I don't know if they require it by certified mail with green cards so you get something tracked back.
Okay.
But I can put that on the list.
Okay. That was pretty, that was everything.
Yeah, sure.
I just want, I think what Mike was trying to say with his first question, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, is like, when you get a construction permit, like you're gutting your kitchen or something like that, you have to display a placard in the window so that everybody knows you have permission.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a method for displaying the fact that there is a permit pulled for the construction of one of these, so that when a neighbor wakes up one day and there is a pole out there, they know that that was done with permission versus without it? And that would eliminate the necessity to call the code officer after the fact and bother them every time this comes up?
That was my, yes, exactly.
If there's a way to eliminate a lot of animosity.
Hey, there's a bunch of poles.
Yeah, so if there was a way to prove it via a, I mean, it's exterior, so via a laminated permit placard or something, showing that...
I've never seen they come up with one of these before, so I don't have a ready answer for you unfortunately, but we'll raise it as a question and turn it back to the governing body, because ultimately they're the...
I think it would defer a lot of issues with the current climate of the area.
I think the...
Yeah, that's what I was driving at, so they don't get, yes, so they don't get overwhelmed.
I don't think you're going to see a lot of individual homeowners applying for this, this is going to be like the rabbi is going to, right, the shul is going to apply for all the members that go to their temple, are going to put up the arrove for all of them. It's going to be a whole area.
Well, that's my question, are they individual permits for the block and lot?
No, it's not going to be that way. I don't think so.
Because by me, right, there are tons of them, on multiple, boom, 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 and it goes around, it goes around.
But are they existing poles or are they new?
No. They're brand-new, twenty-five metal poles.
You don't have utility poles then?
What's that?
You don't have utility poles in your neighborhood?
Yeah, we don't have utility, alright.
Well, we do and we don't, but there are a ton, what's the, what is it over by Starlight?
Attached, but you would still raise it, it'd have to be taller than sixty.
There's just, bang, pole, bang, pole, bang, pole. And there's utility poles, that's the other thing. They're, just an FYI, they're not using the utility poles, they're installing without a markout these poles, okay? What happens if they hit a gas line?
Yeah, I get that. My neighborhood has it around all the poles, like, you wouldn't even see it.
They do one pole and all that stuff, you know?
You wouldn't be able to differentiate. Yeah, I only know about it because I know about it, but any other person in my neighborhood would have no idea that our neighborhood is in an arrove.
Right.
You know, but it's all on the utility poles, so it just looks like another wire in there.
Yeah, these are stainless steel, probably two-inch poles.
I know what you're talking about, I've seen those, yeah.
Yeah, go in the ground.
So, I just think the comment should be, like, did we just, did we think about it? How they're going to get permitted and that kind of thing?
My vision here is that it's going to, the more that we can prevent people from taking these things down, because A, they don't know what they are, or B, they don't like them regardless, there's something that you could show, hey, I did this right, and if, you don't have the right to touch these things.
Yeah.
But it also, they should be done right, a markout should be done, you know?
Yeah.
But yeah, there are a ton of them going up right now.
Where, where are they?
They're over, starting like closer to, what the hell's that road, Mike? At the end of Locust.
What's going on right now?
Maxim Southern, yeah.
What's going on right now, just because I just did it with the council.
Right.
Old Bridge Drive.
Yeah, over by me.
To Markwood. Old Bridge Drive has top of a pole.
Yeah.
So, they're all the poles.
Right.
You don't see them unless you're looking for them.
Right.
And then we have the, what's it called, the freeway.
Yeah.
That's behind those people's houses that go out to Oakland, okay? And that goes around Berkshire to Markwood. So, there's where we had, they had some issues with some homeowners saying, you don't have to attach that to my, behind my fence.
Right.
And so, they went, they've come to the town and they said, listen, that's public property, that's township property, that's right-of-way, okay? It's open space. So, this is where this whole thing is, has come up, that they're going to install these poles on the backs of those properties that we own, the township owns, and the township, and that way they can run the...
See, I think that as long as you go and, I don't even think you need permission, but you should, I think you have to ask, hey, you know, you don't own this, it is your prop, you know what I mean, like for the right-of-ways?
Right. I'm just more concerned about like the easements, yeah, I mean, because it says in the ordinance.
The private property.
I'm more concerned about somebody hitting a freaking gas line.
Well, that too, that's something else I was thinking about as well.
So, your block, for example, okay, Mike, because, let's say in the future, you know, more families go in and they want to make that whole block, you know, safe, whatever this line does.
Yeah.
So, they can move around and function, you know, according to their religion. Your block is going to be interesting, if they come across the front of your house, the front of your driveway, twenty feet high, you know, with a pole, like the neighbor puts a pole up right on his, right on the edge of your property, at your edge, and that line shoots right across the front of your house, driveway, not at the front door, that way you're going to want to go up there and say, you know, that's why.
Yeah, going across my property.
That's where, but that's where it is.
Or the pole doesn't go on the property and it's an aerial rights thing, the wire goes down the fence line or something.
But it traverses your property.
If they were ever developed behind, you know...
But aeroly crosses your property.
So, I'm trying to cut off all these issues at the pass, you know, we're trying to provide a detailed framework to be, you know, to work with everybody, but at the same time, these are things, you know, you've got to think of every possible thing that could go wrong.
Well, they'll look at the...
They're like fishing line on these poles that are up high.
What do they do?
It's so they can, yeah, so they can walk and do stuff.
It extends their private domain.
They bless them so that they can, yeah, they can go on religious...
John, to your point, I've actually thought a lot about, what if like, what if it encompasses your house, like you were just saying?
Right.